Apparently, there has been a little bit of a mix-up that perhaps Jerel Robinson might not have been contacted and doesn't know about the forum tonight. So, they're trying to contact him right now, and hopefully he'll be able to join us shortly. With that, we're going to go ahead, and I wanted to welcome all of you. My name is Leigh Plancy. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Lynn County. And the League is a nonprofit volunteer political organization which does not support or oppose any candidate or political party. The League encourages citizen participation in government and is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. This forum is part of our voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections, and we hope that over the course of this program, you'll learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for the city of Cedar Rapids. So, I will welcome you to this candidate between Pat Loughler and Poe and Jerel Robinson, and hopefully he'll be able to join us soon, who are running for the office of Cedar Rapids City Council at Large. I'll start by explaining some of the procedures for the forum, which you may have heard already if you were here for the first one. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and two minutes in which to answer each question. Opening and closing statements will be done in the following order. If Jerel gets here in time, he was to go first, Pat Loughler will go second, and Poe will go third. The timekeeper is sitting in the front row right here. When there's half a minute left on your speaking time, the timekeeper will hold up a card that says 30 seconds, and then you need to wrap up your answer at 15 seconds, and when you see the stop sign, that's, I'll ask you to stop. If you continue speaking after the stop sign is held up, I'll say, "Thank you very much", and we'll just move on. So, candidates will confine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from personal attacks. This forum is being recorded by Robin Cash of Neighborhood Network News, and will be available to watch at the LWV LynnCounty.org and www.neighborhoodnetworksnews.com websites. Also, ProVideo is live streaming this event at the ProVideo Productions Facebook page. Our League will also tweet the information and have a link on our Facebook page as well. If you haven't already, please turn off or silence your cellphones now, and if at any time during the forum you cannot hear me or the candidates, please let us know. We request that you treat all candidates fairly. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after the closing statements, you may clap for all the candidates if you wish. You're encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the yellow pieces of paper that look like this, and must be addressed to all candidates, and must apply to issues or qualifications for their particular office. Raise your hand if you'd like another piece of paper or to have your question collected. A League panel right down here will review the questions for legibility, clarity, and applicability to all candidates. I can't read it, I can't ask it. There will be as many questions as time allows, sometimes combining similar questions in an effort to cover a variety of topics. So, we will start the candidates' forum with the opening statements, and because he is not here, Pat, it defaults to you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Loughler, please, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters first for having this forum for us, and thanks, everybody, for being here. My name's Patrick Loughler. I'm a lifelong Westside Cedar Rapids resident, born in 1966, got three years old, three children, three grandkids. I'm currently the business manager for the Carpenters Union here in Cedar Rapids, also the president of the Cedar Rapids National City Building Trades. I wear about five or six other hats. I put myself out there in the community. I'm also the chairman of the Master Facilities Oversight Planning Committee for the Cedar Rapids School Board. I work with the city quite a bit, work with Ann, Lynn County Supervisors also. Cedar Rapids is a very important place to myself. My family's here, my mom, 90 years old next month, having a party for her. Roots go deep here in Cedar Rapids for myself. My heart stopped 12 times, 12 different times, 18 seconds the longest pause, and it really made me reflect on a lot of things that I've done in my life and what I haven't done yet. Having grandkids in the Cedar Rapids school system, that's very important to me. I want to make sure they have every opportunity to get the education that they need to move on and be successful in life. I can't say enough about Cedar Rapids itself. I've benefited tremendously being the business manager for the Carpenters Union. I love my job. I love opening doors for people, and that's what it is about the city, too. You can't make people walk through those doors, but if they do, it's a great feeling of success, helping a person better in life. I feel that with my negotiating skills and representation for the Carpenters Union, the Building Trades, I bring a great skill set to the table for negotiating, for bringing people to the table and getting the job finished completely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Poe.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and also thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us tonight, and certainly for all of you for taking time to join us tonight on a Thursday, a beautiful Thursday night. I'd like to thank my family here and friends who have come out tonight and been here to support us in this endeavor of running for City Council at Large. Born and raised in Cedar Rapids along the Red Cedar River, my family home of over eight years was flood-impacted in 2008. I've worked in numerous jobs across this city. I was the dedication week coordinator when we brought Presidents Clinton, Havel, and Cavatch to our National Museum. I was the executive director of the Newbo City Market when we got that up and running, with one of the purposes of that facility to be an opportunity for people who are food insecure to have a place that sat right in the middle of a food desert, and so bringing people in to get good, healthy, fresh food, but also served as an entrepreneurial center so people could come in, they could learn their trade, and then go out into the community. I am thrilled to be here tonight. Being on City Council is my passion. I love Cedar Rapids. My family, as I said, I have three children, grown children that are here, two of which have moved back from other locations around the country to be here. My oldest daughter has four children who live just gratefully a block and a half or so away from me, and this is a community of family. We know each other, we trust each other, we support each other, and we're here to help each other. With that, I'm also very, very grateful for the opportunity to serve over the last eight years as your at-large City Councilwoman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that brings us to the question and answer portion of our forum, and we will trade back and forth who gets this first and who goes second. So, Ms. Poe, you will be answering the question first, the first question first, and I'd like to delve a little bit deeper into why is that you think you are the best qualified? Why should we vote for you specifically? You've said some nice things about, you know, living in Cedar Rapids, but tell us a little bit about your skills, your, what sorts of things you bring to this job?
What I bring to this job is eight years of experience. During that time, I've been, I've sat on the infrastructure, I've been appointed to the Infrastructure Committee for the City Council. I was chairwoman of the Flood Control Committee, Recovery Committee. I'm currently and have served over the last five years as the chairwoman of the Development Committee. I have a full understanding of, having been on council for eight years, of some of the issues and some of the challenges that we face in Cedar Rapids. And having that understanding and that experience, I think, brings a lot to the table. So, for me, it's a strong understanding of the community, of our needs, and the issues that face us, but in addition to that, it's the experience. I bring a lot of experience to the table, and I certainly am ready to serve again and feel like we still have a lot of work to do.
Okay, just note that you didn't take up your two minutes. That's perfectly fine that you don't, and we'll just keep going. Mr. Loughler?
Yeah, so, I myself feel that my skill set that I bring to the table is quite a wide variety of different things. Being in the union, negotiating for my members, I take that very personally because I represent them. Their issues are my issues. It doesn't matter if they're Republican, if they're Democrat, they're independent, they're right-wing, left-wing, it doesn't matter. Their issues are my issues, and that's the way I feel about the city of Cedar Rapids. I'm good at negotiating, bringing people to the table, talking about issues, talking them through, finding out what the true issues are down the beat, why we can't get over the impasses that we have. So, working, I've been in the Carpenters Union for 20 years now, being a business owner, small business owner, too. I'm about small business, local, buy local, build local in Cedar Rapids. That's very important to me. Ann talked about the flood. I was escorted out by the National Guard back in 2008. That was the worst feeling I've ever had in my life. I want to make sure that the city gets the flood control finished up on the east side and the west side, so everybody's protected. We have a small business in Czech Village down there that would be affected if it didn't follow through, and that's one thing that I feel I'm really good at, is following through and making sure things get accomplished and take care of the city.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Loughler, you'll go first this time, and just following up on the issue of flood control, obviously, it's a huge priority for the community. Where are we in the process, and what do you anticipate doing to help with that process?
Well, it sounds like some monies are still being held up a little bit. We haven't had the opportunity, and the city's actually has progress down on the west side. Southwest side is, personally feels going to be, being in the construction industry, I feel that it's going to help Cedar Rapids in the southwest side tremendously. There's still more that needs to be done, you know, upriver, too. There's different things that can be done, dredging, stuff like that. There's a lot of opportunities for the city to explore into, but that's it, needs to be checked into more. We need the professionals to come in and make sure that this doesn't happen to us again. Climate change and everything coming up, that's not the last high water we're getting to see here in Cedar Rapids. It's inevitable something else is going to happen again.
Okay, I'm going to move this over a little bit so that maybe you each have one. Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I'm dedicated to funding strategy for flood control that includes the west side of the Cedar River. As you may recall, we've got 117,000 from the Army Corps of Engineers, and we signed that paper, those paperwork, that paperwork last year. In 2016, the city of Cedar Rapids spent $10 million on our flood fight. That's money that could have easily gone to a flood control system. Since the adoption of the Flood Control Master Plan in 2015, we've gotten six projects completed. We have now the Army Corps Engineer projects. They've got four projects starting from 2019 to 2020. There are six of those additional projects that are underway. 95% of the people of Cedar Rapids support flood protection, not just on the east side but on the west side. The total estimated cost is $750 million if we build it over 20 years, but it could be less if we get it done sooner. So, obviously, that's going to be a big goal. Moody's just approved a plan for our flood control system. We've received 117 from the Army Corps of Engineers for the west side, 267 million from the state of Iowa for the flood, from the Flood Medication Board. We call that the GRI, Growth Reinvestment Initiative, 14.25 million in additional federal funds that we've just gone out and gotten, and 1.28 million from the Iowa DOT for the rail improvement yard at Quaker Oaks. We have a plan that, our local money also, is $264 million worth of local funding. So, there's still a lot of work to do, but the plans are in place, the engineering plans are moving forward, and the west side, we're getting things done on both the east and the west side.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Poe, this is for you. Streets. Street repair is one of the top priorities in our community. How much is being committed, and what is the process for getting our streets done? Boy, there's been a lot of construction this summer.
I think if you got, if anyone has been driving around the streets of Cedar Rapids lately, you have noticed, haven't you, that it's difficult to get around. That's the bad news. The good news is, you can see that we're getting a lot of work done. And so, we, under paving for progress, in fiscal year 2020, we have budgeted $19.2 million for our streets. The Iowa Department of Transportation and Iowa State University Institute for Transportation has provided the city with the expertise needed and the technology to analyze the condition of every one of our streets. And as we've gotten some of those arterial streets done, we're starting now to move into our neighborhood streets. But there's a process, and I know that, you know, we've got, we've got years of road work prepared to do. We're not going to get it done in 10. We're going to have to extend the one cent local option sales tax to fund it. However, you can see the progress, and I know we're getting it done. I would just like to use an example of my street. My street is horrible, and the streets around our neighborhood are horrible. I wish to goodness that I could go to the city engineering team and say, "Will you please come over and fix my street?", but it's not political, and that's, and that's why we do it by a scientific method. We're here to maintain our streets. We're here to take care of the streets that we have, maintain them, while still upgrading a number of the streets that we have. So, it's not political, it's impartial, and we're trying to rehabilitate streets while we replace the worst of them. But there's still a lot of work to do, and we realize that, and we're looking forward to getting them done because there's still a lot of really bad streets.
Thank you, Mr. Loughler.
Yeah, so, that's, door knocking in Cedar Rapids, what I've been doing, it's been kind of a double-edged sword. I myself have been affected by the city streets. I've lost two tires because of that already. Listening to the people of Cedar Rapids, it's important to them if it affects their street. If their street's in good condition, it's out of sight, out of mind. If it affects the road that they travel, it concerns them. I'm for the streets, they've been put off way too long, the streets are deteriorating. You know, there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be rebuilt. Being in the construction industry, I'm not going to lie, my guys, my Carpenters Union, we don't do that kind of work. So, I don't benefit, we don't benefit from that, but I benefit from driving on the streets. I pay the tax dollars, so I want to make sure that money gets spent in appropriate places, the roads get fixed, everybody's roads get fixed. I am hearing from people out in the door knocking that it's important to them, so, both ways, but like I said, if you don't, if it doesn't affect you, it's out of sight, out of mind right now. But I wholeheartedly support it.
Okay, Mr. Loughler, this question is for you to answer first, and it has to do with youth violence. What is being done, and what would you suggest doing to curb youth violence?
Yeah, so, in Cedar Rapids, everybody sees and hears lately in the media, social media, news, paper, a lot, a lot more shootings in the area. My daughter, where she used to live, over off 8th Avenue Northwest, there was a shooting, one of the most recent ones, not too long ago out there. So, having kids and grandkids that live in the neighborhoods is very, very important to me. I've been thinking a lot about it. I live over by Leonardo Southwest Side. I think the neighborhood associations aren't as strong as they could be. These kids don't have a lot to do in the afternoons and the evenings after school, so they congregate and they hang out. It's all sections of, you know, the city. Seeing it firsthand, you know, when I volunteered for the Sweet Corn Festival up there, you know, this last year, the past few years, it's, these kids don't have anywhere to hang out, so there's, they, it creates an issue for them. So, we need to find something positive. If it's after-school programs, I know one thing like the Carpenters do, and we have, we have programs, you know, Kids Build and stuff like that. We're opening up our doors, bring them in to get tools and hammers in their hands when they're younger, younger ages, so we get them interactive things, get them participate in things, give their minds, you know, in the right places.
Ms. Poe?
Well, yeah, violence and shootings and shots fired, obviously, is a concern to everyone within our community. It's a complex issue, and it's not going to be solved just by the mayor or the city council, the police chief or his officers. It's a community problem, and it requires open and honest dialogue between parents, neighbors, school administrators, teachers, the church, community leaders, elected officials, our union brothers and sisters, from all quadrants of the city. And it's going to, it's going to require some engaged and positive role models. Some of what we're currently doing, I support and did support the 100,000 that went to creating the Safe and Equitable and Thriving Communities, that's a task force. I would support increased funding to that organization. They're just getting started, but they have all the right people around the table, and they're going to do a good job. I support an investment in our neighborhood associations. I think they're incredibly important. They have monthly meetings, they, we provide them with crime statistics, and if they see something, they say something. I support extended hours and personnel at both the downtown and the lad libraries that provides access to people and brings people in and gets them off the streets and puts them in a place where they can, you know, be together. We have hired 15 new police officers that are going to graduate tomorrow, 10 of which are going to be part of the PCAT system, that is the Neighborhood Community Action Team. And there's a lot more I could say about that, but there's a lot of work to do.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Poe, this question is for you. It has to do with bringing more employers to Cedar Rapids. As a council member, how would you try to recruit an employer or business with good-paying jobs to Cedar Rapids to purchase and/or develop the old casino site, still standing vacant, so that we can get tax income from that property and also avoid taxing for financing? Our schools reflect lots of poverty-level incomes in our population, so good-paying jobs are important.
Right, well, there are, first of all, I sit on the task force for the first-on-first committee that is looking for a development in that area. And in terms of tax financing, increment financing, and, well, that's kind of a different question, but sincerely, the issues with, with, I'm sorry.
The casino site?
The casino site, and we need to make sure that we are providing, I'm sorry, I've just kind of lost my place. You mentioned something else, though, Mayor, that I wanted to, you said tax increment financing, but you also said something else.
Well, just as a council member, how would you try to recruit good-paying jobs and to that site?
To that site, well, we have, currently, there is a hub, the Economic Alliance has a hub, a program where they're recruiting people in from other areas around the Midwest to come to Cedar Rapids to work. I support that program. I support all kinds of programs with partners out there, whether it's the Economic Development Center, whether it's the Small Business Development Center, those organizations that are working to increase good-paying jobs. And I also support our unions who are also doing apprentice training, and we're bringing people, we're training people for the jobs that exist now. And that location certainly, if it had some retail or if it had, if it had some construction jobs, that would support it either in the, you know, in the short term or in the long term, putting something at that casino site that is going to drive people into our community. You can see it coming off I-380. I think that's extremely important to, again, our community.
Thank you, Mr. Loughler.
Well, that's a, that's a good question to ask. My job right now as a business manager for the Carpenters Union, president of the Building Trades, I do a lot of recruiting when it comes to businesses. When somebody like the city, the city council gets, you know, they, people reach out, corporations or entities reach out to the city when they're talking about developing, I also hear about that from the different entities. We do a lot of sales work for the city as it is right now. You know, we don't put it out there in the paper or, you know, work with the city council directly ourselves, but we are always looking for businesses that can bring into Cedar Rapids. That's been a very, very passionate thing for myself. I'm about the buy local, build local. Personally, have an issue with driving around and seeing a lot of the buildings right now being built in Cedar Rapids, but I've seen like the Missouri, the Texas, the Arizona, the Arkansas license plates. That's, that's money that's not spent back into our community. If we can get that to build local in our community, like Ann was saying, with our unions, not, you don't have to be a union, it's our local builders is what I want to see build all of our buildings. There's going to be opportunities where we don't have the specialty projects, we've got to bring these bigger corporations in for, but it's about sustaining Cedar Rapids and putting back into our community. That's tough to nail down a particular business or something to attract to Cedar Rapids. I mean, one idea I would love to see Cedar Rapids do, and I've seen other cities do it, is beautify the downtown, or the green spaces downtown. We can't build down there right now. Why can't we, why can't we plant tons of wildflowers to bring people in there, save the pollinators, the butterflies and stuff like that? So, I would love to see Cedar Rapids beautified a little bit more, because that's an area down there where you drive along the interstate, people are going to see that, they're going to get off the interstate, come down, visit Cedar Rapids, spend money at the gas stations, at the restaurants, in different areas. So, it's something, short-term, that can be done, and it's not going to cost a lot of money.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Loughler, on the other side of that issue, what is being done, or what would you suggest doing to grow the workforce in a low unemployment environment?
That's, I have my job right now also. I'm always constantly recruiting younger people, older people, people with experience, people without experience in the Cedar Rapids area. I love the better people's lives. It's a, it's a matter of finding the right opportunity for that person. It's not just a job people need to look for, we need to look for careers for these people. It's tough, and that's why I wholeheartedly embrace the apprenticeships in Cedar Rapids, because that doesn't cost anybody anything whatsoever. They actually get paid to go to school, and they, they learn, they get that knowledge, and they get that expertise. So, there's a lot of opportunities, and the trades themselves are getting into the high schools again, we're getting back in, like I mentioned before, Kids Build Program, where we're getting the kids in our apprenticeships and letting them know what a hammer feels like in their hands, and build a birdhouse, or build a bug trap, or something along that line. So, it's a matter of getting back into the schools. We don't have that industrial arts in the schools anymore, so we've got to spark that education for them, get them curious about working with their hands.
Okay, Ms. Poe?
Yeah, well, as I said, there are organizations, whether it's the Economic Alliance with its hub program, about actively recruiting new people into our community, whether it's training young entrepreneurs with, you know, through EDC or through the Small Business Development Corporation or Newbo Co., it's, I think it's not going to be just one solution. At the city, we have a, an economic development department now, and our economic development department has put together a strategic plan, and that really outlines the way we work with the community and those organizations overall, and in that, it talks about workforce development. So, we have a workforce development, under a strategic plan at the city, a workforce development section that has goals and objectives to work with many of the organizations within our community to make sure that our workforce development with such a low, with such a low, you know, not enough workers, we need to, again, train the workers for the jobs and, and like our union apprenticeship program, continue working with those organizations that do provide training for the jobs that are available today. So, ongoing education and continuing to work together.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Poe, this is, with this regard, zoning issues. Minneapolis recently amended their zoning code to effectively end single-family-only zoning and encourage greater density and infill development. Why and/or how would a similar policy work here, or would it work here?
Well, I'm, I'm not so sure that, that, you know, I think part of what we need, of course, is affordable housing for our community. One of the things we just passed on Tuesday at council was the redevelopment of a beautiful historic building on Mount Vernon Road, and that's specific for senior housing, like the Commonwealth that currently exists in Cedar Rapids on Second Avenue. So, affordable housing, senior housing, that sense of density, I think, is going to be important, but in addition to that, I'm not, you know, I think it's going to take, in order to address housing and the zone, appropriate zoning, I think it's going to take a variety of housing type. it's going to take a variety of housing types and a variety of different housing options. So whether it's affordable housing or market rate housing, whether it's single family, whether it's something like a senior housing unit, I think we are going to need to continue to address those issues as they come up, as we look at our housing needs for our community, and then make those determinations as far as what we need for zoning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loughler.
Ann kind of hit it on the head a little bit for myself also. I, there's, Cedar Rapids has a lot of opportunity to grow, but we need to make sure that the right zoning is put in place. You know, we went through Nor Deal with the Round Pot area a little bit ago. There's, there's a lot of residential elevations going on in Cedar Rapids. I'm not sure about the tip monies, you know, how much is spent on them. I want to make sure that we get everything filled up first. We need to, I think Cedar Rapids needs to look at what we've already done, where we're at, because when I drive around Cedar Rapids right now, I see a lot of empty retail space and a lot of empty living space above that retail space. We need to figure out a way to fill them before we, I guess, talk about rezoning in areas and everything. Coming from the construction world, I'd love to build it all, but we need to do it right, properly for the growth of Cedar Rapids and make sure that we can sustain it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Loughler, this is a question on transportation. What changes or developments do you support for Cedar Rapids' public transportation?
Public transportation, I would have to take a look at all the routes myself when it comes to the buses. I myself lived out in Lincoln Way Village for about six years on Oklahoma Avenue and I worked downtown. I rode the bus every single day that picked me up right out from my house. It was a convenience for me. A lot of people have to walk distances to get to those bus stops. Maybe that's the situation. We need to have more stops, more, more routes. That would be something, I don't want to make a snap decision on something like that. I need to look at the situation where the routes are at, what the most usage is for those routes. It's something that needs to be evaluated before making decisions. But I wholeheartedly embrace the public transportation because I use it myself. When I was starting out in my career as a young parent, my wife drove the car, I rode the bus. You know, we had kids, so we had to do what we had to do. It's an opportunity for people to get to the places they need to work, get their groceries. They have to take advantage of it. And if people aren't using the bus routes, we maybe need to reevaluate that and see where they need to go.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Poe?
Yeah, I, I agree with Pat. We need to, first of all, we need to continue analyzing, constantly analyzing what routes are effective and what routes need maybe more, more attention. And, you know, so I think that's an ongoing process. Recently, the city had vouchers for students who we found out through the school system that students were not being able to get to school or get home from school. So working with the school system and Cedar Rapids, we put together vouchers for kids to be able to get to school and get home from school and have transportation to school, which seemed to be a real need in our community. The other thing that we've done is NTS. So when our buses aren't running, we are also being able to get people to the jobs when they need to, whether it's really early in the morning or really late at night. So that system's in place and that's working well. But to Pat's point, you got to analyze constantly, find out where the need is, and then go in and support it with funding. And so that's what we're doing currently.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Poe, this is about neighborhoods and the question, actually, there's two questions. How is it important, why, excuse me, why is it important to support neighborhoods? And how will you encourage police and neighborhoods in building relationships?
I had a friend that recently said neighborhoods are the lens that allows the city to get things done. They're kind of the focal point. I agree. Neighbors often guide us as a city, tell us what they need, what they expect, and what will work well for those individual neighborhoods. To Pat's earlier point, safe and secure neighborhoods are at the core of what the city officials must offer its citizens. And by supporting and promoting strong neighborhood associations, the city council will continue to engage, they'll continue to have conversations with the citizens surrounding public safety. And that's why our neighborhood associations are important. They're the ones that are on the ground. You know, when you take a look at safety of a neighborhood, you're also talking about an ongoing investment by the city, the connectivity of that community, you know, the walkability, sidewalks, bike lanes, basic infrastructure needs like lighting and curbs, and then, of course, affordable housing. And focusing on job creation along with economic development, that momentum helps those neighborhoods and helps in solving some of the crime issues as well. But programs like the Neighborhood Finance Corporation that helps stabilize the quality of the neighborhood and add to the economic vitality is extremely important to our neighborhoods. We have annual, each neighborhood meets monthly. And there's a police officer at every one of those neighborhood meetings. They had, they gather input from the neighbors saying, here, we saw this, and we report back to them what we're seeing. So it's an ongoing process, but strong neighborhoods are at the core of our community and we always have to work with them.
And Mr. Loughler?
Yeah, I agree with Ann. It's been very interesting, myself, outdoor knocking already. I did not even realize the diversity in my own neighborhood. And that's what's been the awesome part about it. Talking to them, seeing what they want and what's going to work for them. Ann made the comment about what's going to work for each individual neighborhood, because not every neighborhood's the same in Cedar Rapids. There's a lot of diversity. We're getting more and more diverse as time goes on. So if it comes down to, we need to have a program. I really like the idea of the police officers being in the neighborhood. Ann talked about the new officers getting hired. They're, hopefully they'll be walking some beats against, getting out in the neighborhoods and talking to people, because there's such a stereotype out there right now of police officers. You know, I went to school to be a police officer. I got my law enforcement degree from Kirkwood and my AA from them. And I thought I wanted to be a police officer until I had a gun pointed in my face. And that made me realize it wasn't worth it, really. These guys put their life on the line. So we need to change the stereotype out there and embrace them more, because they're out there protecting us. And Cedar Rapids is encountering more and more violence in this city. We need to embrace the police officers, because they do such an awesome job. They do have great outreach programs now, and I think that can really help with the neighborhood associations more. Once these new officers hit the ground, they're going to do, they're going to have a heavy impact in the cities and the communities.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Loughler, you mentioned diversity. This next question deals with diversity. What do you plan to do about the increased diversity in the city? How will you support diverse groups and ensure that they receive the same opportunities as existing residents?
Great question. That's, that's part of my life already, as being, as part of my job. I represent all races, walks of life. It doesn't matter to me or my family where you come from, what religion that you've embraced. That is your choice and I wholeheartedly support that. It's, it's a matter of doing what's right, the common sense things, treating your neighbors the way you want to be treated. It's civility, if that's a word. You know, bringing that back. We don't, like I said, when I was out door knocking, I'm almost embarrassed to not know who was in my own neighborhood. So that's why I want to make sure that, I participate more. I live in a great place and I want to, I want to get to know my neighbors. I'm willing to host them, make them parties now myself. So it's very important that we start talking to each other, because too many people are not going out in their driveways and having fire, bonfires, or, you know, communicating anymore. So we need to get back to basics and communicate with each other and support each other.
Thank you, Ms. Poe.
Yeah, I grew, I grew up in a, in a household that embraced every child that walked through the doors. And it didn't matter what color they were, what their sexual orientation was, who they were. My parents had open arms and embraced everyone that came to our home. So I was very fortunate to have parents who taught me firsthand about the importance of diversity. It's one of the things I love most about Cedar Rapids is the fact that we are so diverse and we're becoming more diverse. And I think what we need to do is continually address issues of affordable housing for all, whether it's senior citizens, whether, whether it's underserved populations, provide them with opportunities for employment, again, working with organizations that, that, that can help, you know, provide employment to everyone, getting people where they need to get. It goes back to that transportation issue. I don't think it's any one solution. I think it's a, I think it's a community issue. I think it's a community opportunity to solve. And so I really, I really embrace the fact that we have such a wonderful and diverse community. And, and I, I think it's wonderful and it really speaks volumes about Cedar Rapids and our willingness to be good neighbors.
And Mr. Loughler, you have?
I got a few seconds left. I just wanted, I forgot to mention, I just love what Cedar Rapids has done. I mean, the past few years when it comes to the Asian Fest, the Hispanic Fest, the other festivals we have in Cedar Rapids, Latino Fest. It's such diverse cultures that you get to see that I really wasn't aware of. I didn't know a lot about. So that's why I really would love what Cedar Rapids has been doing the past few years when it comes to that. It's awesome.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Poe, this question is, you can answer first. It's on historic preservation. How do you think we can continue to grow our historic neighborhoods and stop the loss of our historic buildings in those neighborhoods?
Well, I think we have to continue on with, with the very hard work of our Historic Preservation Commission. I was for a number of years the liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. When Mayor Hart came, became our mayor, he said, no more liaisons, everybody go to whatever meetings you want. But I continually support historic preservation. I continually work with the Historic Preservation Commission. We put in place, I think maybe three years ago now, a new organization called Friends for Historic Preservation. And because our commission cannot take money or, you know, hand out money. So what we needed was an organization that could go out and fundraise and could bring money to, to those historic buildings that we want to preserve and protect. Recently, the, the commission has put together a list of, I think, 100 endangered properties, but we boiled it down to 10. And so we are going to go out, we're going to reach out to those property owners. Some of them are privately held, but they're obviously beautiful historic structures like the Avril House. And so what we want to do is reach out to them, educate them, tell them about the importance of historic preservation. This is part of our history. This is who we are, and we can't lose those structures. So whenever we have an opportunity, we have to work with the people who own those properties. In some cases, they just want to sell them. And we can't control that as a city if it's privately owned. But in instances, the HPC again does, does a program every year where it's education about historic properties. And it, they do a wonderful job. And so supporting our commission, supporting the nonprofit organizations, having them work together to preserve our historic structures are extremely important.
Thank you, Mr. Loughler.
Well, this one's a kind of an over here for me being in the construction field. I love remodeling, restoring, especially historical buildings and stuff like that. I'm a little naive to all the building, different buildings and structures in Cedar Rapids area that could possibly qualify for the historical registry. I would, I would have to sit down, like I said before, and evaluate it, see where, what, what the most important structures would need to be repaired, what's worth it, what's going to be a return for the Cedar Rapids, city of Cedar Rapids. I'm all about remodeling and bringing stuff back to life. There's nothing, I can obviously say the construction world is nothing like it was in the old days. And look how long these buildings have lasted. And, you know, they just need a little bit of tender loving care to be brought back up to their original estate. And I wholeheartedly support them. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Loughler, on an entirely different note, what do you think, this has to do with homelessness. What do you think we should do to reduce the number of homeless adults and children in the community? And what initiatives will you support to provide homes for the homeless in Cedar Rapids?
So that's, I've been thinking about homelessness a lot lately. Driving around Cedar Rapids, you'll see some people, you know, on the streets begging with the signs and everything. Cedar Rapids is the size of population where we really shouldn't have that kind of situation in this town. Working with the, with the building trades, we, I kind of did a little bit of pushing to get the building trades to donate some money to the schools, to the teachers store. And so we raised $4,000 to donate to them. And I asked them what they wanted, you know, pencils, pens, stuff like that, Kleenex. What really broke my heart is they said they didn't need any of that stuff. They needed underwear, they needed socks, new clothes, t-shirts, coats, winter coats. That tells me there is an issue, issue in Cedar Rapids with poverty. We shouldn't have that. Far as the programs out there, I don't know of all of them. I know the ones that I get involved with, United Way, we've helped, the Catherine McCauley Center. There's all kinds of them. I work really, really closely with the Freedom Foundation, the veterans, always trying to raise money for them. That's, that's a tragedy in itself right there when it comes to the veterans and homelessness for the veterans and stuff. So it's a very passionate thing for me, my father and my grandfather being military veterans, and my brother. But like I said, Cedar Rapids is the size of city that we shouldn't have that issue. There's, there's a lot of opportunities out there. What they are, I don't know yet, but I've been thinking about that a lot myself. And, you know, I'm very fortunate to have what I have right now and be in the position I'm in. And that's one thing that's very close to me that I want to work on. I talk to my wife about it all the time. If I could give every, every person out on the corner money, I'd be doing that, but I would be broke myself.
We don't want that to happen. Okay, Ms. Poe?
Yeah, and, you know, I, I agree with Pat. For a city this size, we should, we should not have this issue. And you're right, Pat, it is awfully heartbreaking. We have, you know, recently, the city has helped fund an emergency shelter, the emergency shelter, the expansion of the Willis D. We have on Common Bond, it's, it was, it's a, it's a development over on Edgewood Road. And there were five units there. It's transitional housing for homeless people. Partnering with nonprofit organizations certainly is extremely important. You know, Horizons, Boys and Girls Clubs. You know, I, I think too, we made a real significant step over the summer with Green Square Park. And Councilman Todd helped put together a program for, it's called an ambassador program. People who are formerly homeless goes out into Green Square Park and sits down and talks with people and tries to find out what their needs are. And, you know, one of the other things that we've done recently is the city of Cedar Rapids has a mental health liaison underneath the auspice of our police department. And so if our police officers go into an area that have homeless people and there may have some mental issues associated, they can, instead of throwing people in jail, we now have a liaison that can go work with them and talk with them and help them get whatever services they want. We also have cards that we've been handing out to homeless people about where they can go to get the services they want. And so I don't think it's going to be any one specific thing we can do, but it's going to be a combination of things that we can do to continue to help people who are homeless.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Poe, considering the increased rain events that we have experienced in this community over the past several years, should the city renovate streets by using permeable pavers?
Well, I'd love to use permeable pavers. It would be great. Unfortunately, we did look at that at one point when I was on the Infrastructure Committee, and it's extremely pricey to do. With the increase in the rain events that, that we've, we've seen happen, our old systems just were not built for that. So some of the things that we have been able to do in relation to urban flooding is we've required four inches in annuit developments. For example, a developer comes in and...
For example, a developer comes in and they scrape off all the topsoil. So what we've said is you've got to put at least four inches of that topsoil back or the equivalent of some kind of compostable material. We've included, we've asked them to include bioswells where it's important. Every new development has to have a retention pond. And again, I love permeable pavers. If we could put them in some of the parking lots so that we mitigate some of the runoff, that would be good. It would be great if we could do it in every street, but quite frankly, it's just not financially feasible to be able to do it. But we are trying to do various things to, to help with some of the urban flooding that we have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loffler.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Ann on that one. It's a very expensive process. It takes a lot more grading and leveling, and it's just an expensive process. There's other options out there. I don't know what the perfect fix is for Cedar Rapids. Like I said, being escorted out of my house during the flood and everything, I want to make sure that we do have the follow-through when it comes to the flooding situations. It's not going to stop, it's not going to go away. Climate change, to me, is real. We are going to have issues with it. So I just don't see the feasibility of the pavers, myself. Like Ann said, they're, they work, but you're talking, would we have to raise taxes? What would we have to do to pay for that, offset that kind of price? That would be a tough one. You know, if we let that up to the citizens of Cedar Rapids, I think kind of, I think that would be an overwhelming vote no, personally. But that's a tough one. That's a very pricey situation to get into.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Loffler, this has to do with bicycle lanes. What can be done to make bicycle lanes less confusing for drivers?
Well, that's a, that's a tough, tough question. I'm going to revert back to knocking on doors. Talking to the citizens of Cedar Rapids, people who use the bicycle lanes, they love them. The people who don't, sometimes I'm here, they don't care about them, sometimes I'm here, they just hate them. The changes of the downtown Cedar Rapids area, going from the oneways to the twoways and stuff like that, and putting the curbs and medians in there for parking, you know, at the beginning of the turns of the streets and everything, it's frustrating a lot of people. I myself, I'm not a biker. I don't, I used to ride a motorcycle, but that's not the same thing as riding bikes in town. I'm out on the highways on that. So I, I don't have an issue with the bikes, bike lanes and bike trails and stuff, because it is attracting people into the city. But like I said, it's a double-edged sword for people. If you're not amused with it, people are disgusted with it, because they're having some issues. It's just, you're not going to be able to please everybody. But we got to keep, continuing to try to improve Cedar Rapids to attract more people and, you know, young families in the movement of this area. And that's what people are getting into. They're out there, people are getting into healthier lifestyles, and they like that. So I support them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Poe.
Yeah, a few years ago, we committed to Blue Zones and committed to making Cedar Rapids a walkable community. And part of that, of course, were trails and bike lanes. I am a, I am a bike rider, I'm not a motorcycle rider, but I am a bike rider, and I love the trails. And anytime I can use a trail over a city, over a city street, I prefer to use a trail. It's just, I feel safer on it. And with the amount of trails that we're now putting in place, it makes it easier. There was a commitment also several years ago by the Metropolitan Planning Organization to put a lot coming toward trails. And so you're seeing more trails around our community that are becoming safer. A couple of things I think we need to do is educate our bikers. There's, there should be, for me, at any rate, a certain sense of personal responsibility. I need to stop at the stop signs. I need to make sure that, you know, I'm aware of my surroundings, right? And I'm not running out in front of people with my bicycle. And, you know, I have to obey, I can't ride my bike on the sidewalks. I've got to obey the laws that are put forth through ordinance for bicycles. Putting some markings on our pavements, we've been doing that to denote bicycle lanes when they're in the street. And so those, you know, that kind of rubs off over time, you know? Cars drive on it. So we have to keep up with that and keeping that paint so that you can denote which is actually a bike lane. And then just educating overall, the overall public, drivers and bicyclists, that this is a part of our life now. We have people, you can see on a Wednesday night, people coming all across our downtown and down into Newbo and the Czech Village and riding. Every one of our levees is going to have a trail on top of it. So this isn't going to go away, and I think the best thing we can do is to educate people about where we're supposed to be and how we're supposed to interact with cars.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Poe, this, we've got a couple more questions. This has to do with entertainments, entertainment and attractions. How do you feel about the lack of entertainment attractions in our community? For example, we don't have a water park or a theme park or a casino.
Well, we tried.
Yeah, we did.
Well, you know, I, I don't know. Look at, you know, I look at Cedar Rapids and a community our size, and I embrace our entertainment venues. We have a well-known orchestra, we have opera, we have community theater, we have the Paramount Theater that brings all kinds of shows that come in. We have, we have, you know, we've got all kinds of cultural entities. We've got a world-renowned museum of art. We have, you know, we've got, I'm so proud of our arts and cultural organizations because we really have a lot going on in Cedar Rapids. Again, you know, we can always do more. And we can always entertain festivals, as Pat mentioned earlier. The diversity of our festivals that have really, you know, kind of popped up over the last several years is wonderful. We can always do more. There's always more we can do. If I could sit here and say, you know, should we do a zombie run? You bet. Should we do one of the, you know, we have runs almost every other weekend, supporting one wonderful cause or another. But, you know, I, I think that we can always do more, but I think we also should embrace what we have and support those arts and cultural organizations that bring so much to our community and get out and enjoy what we have. The Newbo City Market, look at all the events that are going on down there now. Czech Village has a new plan coming on board, and hopefully we get a roundhouse in place. So there's a lot going on, and we can always do more, but I love to think about embracing what we currently have, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loffler.
We just stole my thunder a little bit. The roundhouse there. So growing up in Cedar Rapids, it's not like it used to be. When I was young, you know, we could go to this roller skating area. There was always something to do for us, you know, as kids and stuff. There's nothing nowadays, like I said, after-school programs. We definitely have enough bars, in my eyes. I don't drink, by the way, but I don't have an issue with drinking either. It brings a lot of revenue to Cedar Rapids. But we need to find something that's more family-oriented, you know? To give an example, I wholeheartedly support Speedies. They're out there on 33rd Avenue out there, at the old Galt Sand Building out there. That is such a great family venue out there. I mean, if you're a competitive person, you could have a family night out there or something along that, along like that. So we need more issues like that. We don't have the water park that we struck out on, we missed out on the casino. Probably not going to get that opportunity again with the casino. It's going to take a lot, a lot of doing, so if we're done. But we got to figure out what it is. I don't know what that perfect answer is, I don't know what that venue would be, but we got to look, sit back and look at what is going to be more family-oriented. I love the Newbo area down there, the Czech Village area is coming alive. Ann talked about the roundhouse is going to come back. And I remember going down there and getting an apple, you know, for, you know, two, three cents when I was a kid and stuff like that. So that's, that's the kind of family-oriented things I want to see Cedar Rapids bring back. What that perfect answer is, I don't know. But I really want to be at the table to make that happen and open up those opportunities for City of Cedar Rapids.
Okay, great. Last question. Mr. Loffler, if you're elected, what would you like to address? The top three issues that you would like to address in your term?
Kind of here on my cowboy guard, local labor, small business opportunities. I'm about buy local, build local. I want to, I truly feel that money spent from Cedar Rapids on things should be brought back into this community when it comes to building buildings, different opportunities for the, for the city to grow. Public safety is huge for me. Like I talked about, I had some meetings with some city officials. Cedar Rapids is having a gang, gang activities now again. And it's, that's where a lot of the shootings are stemming from. So we need to, we need to embrace the police force, sheriffs, they do a great job in this town. And then flood protection. Like I said earlier, I was escorted out of my house by the National Guard. That's the worst feeling in the world, being displaced. I want to make sure that we get that finalized and completed. And I feel I'm very good at following them.
Thank you. Ms. Poe.
Yeah, my, you know, there's a lot, obviously, but first on my, first on my list is work with my council colleagues, the city team and community partners to help determine some opportunity gaps. Providing programming, economic solutions, and the necessary community facilities, whether we partner with schools and we open up basketball courts, or we open up the actual schoolhouses for programming, to build capacity across our community to curb youth violence. The other thing I strongly support is the infrastructure programs like Paving for Progress. We will have to extend that. We've got, you know, we've got, you know, how many years have we delayed funding for our, for our streets? So paving for progress and flood, and a flood control funding strategy to complete the flood control system on both sides of the river, not just the east side, but to Pat's point, the west side as well, and to get it done as quickly as possible. 2016 isn't going to be the last time we're going to have a flood fight, and we need to be prepared and we need to be ready. So as many of those structures as we can get up, the better off we're going to be. So that's another top priority. But then formalize our housing initiatives based upon competitive advantages, including affordable housing, market-rate housing, and then a variety, as I mentioned before, different housing options for our community. And base it on data. We do every year a national housing study that tells this community exactly where the housing needs are within our community. Right now, we're really missing out on senior housing, so that's going to be another real important initiative for me.
Okay. Candidates, thank you very much for your willingness to answer these questions. You now have two minutes for your closing statements, and we will begin with Ms. Poe.
Well, again, thank you so much to the lead of women voters, Madam Mayor. Really appreciate this opportunity, and to my friend and colleague, Pat Loffler. And I really appreciate the opportunity to serve the community. I love, I am proud of my past council colleagues and the entire city team under the leadership of Jeff Pomeranz. You know, it's taken a lot of political will, a lot of courage and bold moves to make the tough decisions we needed to move Cedar Rapids ahead and make it grow. It's that kind of leadership and experience that makes Cedar Rapids a place where both families and businesses can thrive, not just survive. I have this experience, I have the knowledge from my years on council and committee appointments for the job, and I'm asking for your vote on November 5th to continue our progress and keep Cedar Rapids growing for generations to come. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Loffler.
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much for hosting tonight. Appreciate that. Thank you to the lead of women voters for hosting it. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate you all helping. I really would appreciate your votes coming up in November 5th. I will dedicate myself to making Cedar Rapids a better city. This is my passion, help people, help everybody, not just my union members or the construction world. It's about helping Cedar Rapids. I can't say enough how much I love this city. I had an opportunity to move up to the Mall of America back in 96 and 97. We had two stores up there. I didn't do it. This is my home, this is my roots. I have my kids here, my grandkids are here, my mother's here still. Cedar Rapids has a lot to look forward to in the future, and I really want to be a part of that, sitting at the table on it and helping the city. So thank you very much. I appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you. I'd like to close this forum with a couple of personal comments. I have had the opportunity to serve on the city council, and I can tell you, it is not only one of the most difficult jobs that I ever had, but it was also the most rewarding job that I ever had. Tonight, you asked over 16 questions, all of which were on different issues. It's a very complex job. It is the government that is closest to the people. You can't get away from being an elected official ever. You run into people in the grocery store, in the movie theaters, out for lunch. Everywhere you go, you are confronted by people asking, "When is my street going to get done? When is this going to happen? When is that going to happen?" It's a tough job, and I am really grateful that we have the quality of people that have put their names forward to run for this office. We should all be very grateful to these folks for putting themselves out there on our behalf. So thank you. Close this forum by, first with apologies to Jerel Robinson. Please, if Mr. Robinson has information out there, please read it so that you are well-informed. I'm sorry, but...
I'm sorry, I have something on that.
Okay.
So it's under your attention that Jerel may not have known the details of this event. There may have been a mix-up in his email. If that's been confirmed, then he will have the opportunity to answer these same questions on our Facebook Live seat that lead will present on our Facebook. We haven't made that final determination yet, and he hasn't been part of that decision, and he'll be contacted first. So we just encourage you all to follow our Facebook page so you can see his responses as well. We'll also offer these candidates that were featured tonight the opportunity to do the same. We have a fair and equal playing field for every city council member running for the same seat to have their ideas and their...